I'm on the record for this.
Yes.
It's like, you know. But in case it catches.
Screwed, man.
You know.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock, and as mayor, I hereby call to order a meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for July 22, 2019 at this hour. We'll begin, as always, tonight with a salute to our American flag. I'd ask that you please rise and join Councillor Bruce Cheney in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll note for the record that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by the city clerk, Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask at this time she please call the roll.
Councillor Cheney.
Here.
Councillor Bounds.
Here.
Councillor Littman.
Present.
Councillor Haynes.
Here.
Councillor Hamill.
Present.
Councillor Cheney. Hosmer.
Changed his name.
Cheney Hosmer. Here. Is there a mayor in here we don't know about?
Mayor Engler.
Present. Let the record show that all six councillors are present tonight, and a quorum has been established for this meeting. We'll also note for the record that the city council is joined at the front table tonight, as always, by City Manager Scott Myers and by our City Finance Director Glenn Smith. Before we start down the agenda, I will want to make the councillors aware of the fact that we are going to have a non-public session at the end of tonight's meeting with regard to item D under the right to no law, consideration of the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property will be the topic for that meeting. So we'll do that at the very end tonight. We don't expect to take any action that would require coming back into public session at the end of that meeting. Be more of a briefing. Okay. Onto the agenda. The first item tonight would be approval of minutes. For consideration are our minutes to the last meeting that we held on July 8, 2019. The minutes were distributed by the clerk two days later. No corrections or changes were submitted to the clerk before tonight's meeting, so unless there are any at this hour, I'm going to proclaim that the minutes of our last regular meeting on July 8, 2019 are approved as submitted by the clerk. We have no consent and action items tonight, so we're on to citizen comments for matters not on tonight's agenda. This is the portion of our meeting where we welcome comment from anyone in our audience who wishes to address the council on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda. If it's something you want to discuss that is on tonight's agenda, that comes up later in the meeting. But right now, not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council on a matter not on tonight's agenda? All right, sir. If you could tell us who you are and where you live and...
John Gato is from Belmont. And I just wanted to mention, if you guys can put a sign up like Charlie St. Clair said, for the dangerous turn that he put in the Sun Paper. And there's been times that I talked to the people, a couple of people that work at Cactus Jack's, and I wanted to find out first so I knew to keep pushing, and they said it's a mandatory thing that they're going to be parking across the street all the time for as long as they work there. And when you come up to the top of that hill, there's been a couple of times those workers there, they're just scared shitless because they come up and it's like, you know, they're worrying if the person's going to stop. And then, you know, some of them leave work late at night or early in the morning, and I talked to the town or city, whatever, and they said it would be like fifteen thousand for a light. But they put one up on Messer Street, which, after somebody got killed, and then the people that work for Cactus Jack, that should not be like that, you know? You know, like what happened if it was one of your grandkids or one of your family members that was working there? Then they got killed, maybe then it would be a different story. But it's not right that they should have to cross that all the time. And there's nothing stating for people to slow down or crosswalk. You know, there's nothing at all, you know, no signs or nothing.
Okay, so you're calling to our attention the fact that people who work at T-Bones and Cactus Jack's park by their employer's arrangement across Union Avenue on the other side of the street.
Yeah, they park over at that golf cart.
That there's no crosswalk there to...
Nope.
Enable them to cross.
And there's no solar energy lights to let that lit up, so, you know, and then they got black pants on, and then, you know, once it's night. So I've been going by there a couple of times, and I asked the Sun Paper to put an article in, but I don't know if it was gonna, and I put it in the Sun Paper saying it was going to be my, that was going to be my job to try to see if I can get a light put in, even though I was told it costs a lot. And like one of the workers said that they've been asking for like five years. So five years, you guys are lucky so far that nobody's got killed over there. So they've been parking across the street for a long time.
Is the administration aware of any requests for said crosswalk consideration?
We have not heard from anybody from that business asking for anything. I think it would be, just off the top of my head, visualizing that location, there is a crest of a hill as you're coming by, friendlies to start to go downhill, so all of a sudden have a surprise crosswalk there that someone isn't anticipating. Probably presents more challenges of the illusion of being safe crossing there, but typically you want much better sightlines to put a crosswalk even with a flashing beacon or something there, so.
Down closer to McDonald's or somewhere at the bottom of the hill, maybe?
Certainly would want to look at the location, and I'm not a traffic engineer and certainly would defer to others, but just knowing that right there, so I could certainly...
Can we request having DPW and the police give us a recommendation on that?
Sure, and we can reach out to the property owner or business owner and just let them know that concern is raised.
I think they rent their spaces from the golf cart place.
Yes. I've seen them.
Yeah, that'd be so awesome, because if I could remember the kid that I asked, I can go back there, and he's the one that told me like five years, and he told me thank you for trying to do something. He said five years he's been, you know, they've been asking.
But if the owner has an arrangement with a business across the street, and he's making his employees park over there, then he should have some financial obligation to remedy that also.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's a good idea to...
Because otherwise, you know, somebody crosses the street to go to McDonald's from the boat place, we're going to put in a crosswalk there, or Dairy Queen, we're going to put in a crosswalk, or, you know, I mean, you could just go up and down the avenue.
Oh, yeah.
So he kind of brought that on himself, too.
Oh, yeah.
So he should be responsible for the sum of money it might cost or a portion of it anyway.
And then are they ever going to start pushing for a parking meter person downtown, like, you know, conquered, you know, number of the parking spaces? Because they pushed for the diagonal parking, it was supposed to make so much more parking, but there's been a couple weeks, I remember even last year, the same thing. There's one or two downtown store owners, they'll park right in front of their store because they think they're too good to have to walk to the parking lot. It's like, a lot of them, you know, the exercise we're doing, some good...
As you heard in the meeting before this one tonight, there's all kinds of things on the table right now in terms of looking at the overall downtown parking. And certainly one of the things that is under consideration is to start charging for parking again.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Anyone else have something they would like to bring to the council's attention that is not on tonight's agenda? Representative St. Clair.
I'll be very quick.
Not so nice a tie.
Well, I kind of got dressed in a hurry to come here, sorry.
Got jeans on, though. Can't see that on TV, but...
And wearing sneakers, too. Thank you.
Me, too.
A couple of things. Real quickly, since people are talking about lights and stuff, I just want to remind the council that I hope and pray that when the construction is being finished, whenever that is, on Court Street, Union Avenue, and Main Street, that the lights, if they're changed, we get a blinking arrow, left turn arrow, so that people are not stopping people after they long could be gone, like we do on Guilford Avenue and on North Main Street when it works. So I would appreciate you guys looking at that very closely. I don't know if that has to go before committee or not, but I really hope that you take that consideration for all of us that drive through the intersection, not only during the day, but also at night.
Go through that one more time? What intersection are you talking about?
Main Street, Court Street, South Main, Union Avenue.
Oh, this one, okay.
Yeah.
You want a blinking left arrow?
Right. Like we, or a solid green for a left turn, so that we're not stopping people after we could have made the left turn, you know, at 10 o'clock at night or whenever it is. So, you know, I'm sorry, but we don't have heavy traffic here 24 hours a day, so, I know, so thank you. The other thing is on recycling. I happened to be behind the recycling truck today on Wears Boulevard, and I was very depressed watching what was going in the back of that truck. Obviously, there was still glass, which we're not supposed to do, and I understand that. And there was, as the mechanism would crush everything up, I watched a lot of liquid and obviously garbage coming back down. So my guess is that a lot of that stuff that we think we're recycling is not being recycled. It's probably contaminated to the point where it just goes into a trash someplace. And I know that when we used to separate all of our recycling, we had can, you know, for cans, glass, paper, plastic, and it took a little bit more effort for the citizens to do that, but the reality is it worked. And I don't blame where all this stuff was going. People are complaining now and not buying our recycled stuff because everything's contaminated, but maybe we just need to get people back to doing that. And a lot of us have the green barrels to do that. Some people ended up buying those green barrels, the tubs, buckets. So I don't think it would be that big of a deal, because I've not only heard it from people close to me, but from other people that are very unhappy with our recycling program now. And I know we're trying to make it be cost-effective, but maybe if we clean it up, people will be more apt to buy it wherever it's going.
When you say they're unhappy, what, why are they unhappy?
They're unhappy because they really think that the recycling is not being recycled because of the way it's being all dumped up and contaminated. We all read the same news reports, how contamination is ruining the stuff that we think we're recycling, because it's getting shards of glass where glass is still being put in. And some people are just very lazy, and you can see that at Messer Street with the cage over there. It's very well-marked, it says corrugated cardboard only, and there are still some very uninformed people, I'll be kind, who jam other things in there, and then the city public works workers have to take that out and put that somewhere else. So it, but not everybody is like that, and I think if we just maybe set an example for everybody, there are towns that in fact have gone back to separating it, maybe that's just the way to go. So I just wanted to throw that out there while I have your attention. Nice tie, councillor, it matches your shirt, I like that. Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, we'll move on then. Nominations, appointments, and elections are next up. We had interviews at our last meeting, and we have one contested election tonight, which I'll get to in a few minutes, but let's take care of the unopposed nominations, applications first, if we could. First up, councillors on page 17 of your packet is consideration of Lisa Morin. She is seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Conservation Commission for another three-year term. This one would expire in 2022. A motion would be in order to reappoint Lisa Morin as a regular member of the Conservation Commission. Councillor Hamill makes that motion. Councillor Hosmer seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that nomination is approved. Next up is Lois Kessin, seeking appointment as a regular member of the Heritage Commission for a three-year term expiring at the end of 2022. And that was just the one... I must have turned two pages here. I don't even have a page on her, is that?
No, they made a mistake, I think.
My are out of order.
No, there's...
It's doubled.
Excuse me for a second here. I have two Dennis.
Two Dennises, but no Lois.
One on 18 and one on 21.
Yeah, two Dennises and no Lois.
We got two Dennises and no Loises. So councillor, councillor Littman moves to appoint Lois Kessin to a, seeking, to a term as a regular member of the Heritage Commission, excludes my stumbling, for a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2022, and that was seconded by councillor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. All right, so we'll get to Dennis in a minute here. Next up is Brianna Neal. She is seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Downtown Tiff Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring in August 2022. Motion be in order to appoint Ms. Neal as a regular member of the Downtown Tiff Advisory Board for a three-year term. That motion is made by councillor Hosmer, seconded by councillor... Who raised their hand? Councillor Bounds did, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor of making that appointment, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries, and Ms. Neal's appointment is made. Next up, we have the same board, Downtown Tiff Advisory Board. Charlie St. Clair is also seeking reappointment to a three-year term. Motion be in order to make that appointment. Councillor Hamill makes that appointment. Councillor Littman seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor of appointing Mr. St. Clair, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. All right, now, we are down to the Water Commission, and we have two applicants for the sent, we interviewed last time, for the same position. All right, so we can only appoint one of these two gentlemen tonight. And to refresh the council's memory on how we do this when we have a contested position is, we don't do this by ballot or anything. In a minute, I'm going to declare the floor open for nomination. Once I make that motion, you are free to nominate any of you, either gentleman. If there's a second to that motion, we will vote on that appointment. If that person gets four votes, they're appointed and the process stops there. If that motion does not get four votes, the floor would again be open for nomination, and the other person's name could be put in nomination. Everybody understand that? All right, so I'm going to declare the floor open for a motion to appoint one or the other. Councillor Hosmer.
I'll move Dennis Bothamley.
All right, councillor Hosmer has moved to appoint, reappoint Dennis Bothamley as a regular member of the Water Commission for a three-year term expiring in 2022. Councillor Hamill seconds that motion. Any discussion about that motion? All those in favor of it, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries, and Mr. Bothamley is appointed for a three-year term, and we also thank Mr. Selling for, Selling, I'm sorry, for applying for that position as well.
Yeah, really, we need to thank him for applying. Thank you.
Okay, public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. Call your attention to pages 23 and 35 of your packet. The first public hearing is on Resolution 19, which is published in its entirety on page 35 of your packet, having to do with the restoration and repair of this Colonial Theater. This public hearing tonight is on Resolution 19, relative to bonding to finance the repair and resolution of the historic Colonial Theater. Notice of the public hearing was made available in the July 10, 2019 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Community Center, and at the Laconia Public Library. The fiscal impact in fiscal year 20 of this resolution will be known once bids are received, but is not expected to exceed $230,000 and may be significantly lower if bids indicate that no principal is due until fiscal year 2021. So to refresh everyone's memory, this is a proposal that passed on first reading and will be up for second reading later tonight at this meeting for the city to borrow $6.7 million to put toward the restoration of the Colonial Theater. I will open this public hearing at 7:19 PM and ask if there's anyone in our audience tonight who wishes to offer opinion to the council on this resolution. Please come forward.
Marcia Hayward, Wildwood Road, and I'm just asking for clarification. I'm a little confused when I read the article in the Sun about this proposal and Mr. McClear coming in and offering to help with the second and third stories of the building. So at the end of five years, it's my understanding that the theater would resort to the city. And at the end of five years, the second and the third floors either become Mr. McLean's property, or if he condominiumizes it, it becomes the owner of the condo. So I'm curious, will the city end up in a sticky situation like the parking garage, where you have multiple owners?
Well, no different than in any other condominium building, meaning that there would be multiple owners of the same envelope of real estate. Like if you had, like Beacon Street West, for example, where you have a whole bunch of condominiums in one building. So there's individual ownership, and then there's common ownership to maintain the common parts, the roof, make sure the roof's repaired if it leaks or something other than that sort of thing. So the way the ownership structure, the way the structure would work is that the city would lease the theater for five years. And we have to do that because some of the money is grant money that's going in to repair it, and we can't be the owners for five years because it has to be a for-profit corporation that's the owner.
I understand.
So that's Belknap Economic Development Council. So we'll lease it from them for five years, and then at the end of five years, we'll buy it from them for a dollar, basically. We'll forgive the debt, the loan, the money we loaned into the project, and we'll take ownership of it. The, when we first started into this project, I'll try to explain this as simply as I can. When we first started into this project, the second and third floors were part of the project. That has been divorced now. So in terms of the grant money and all the funding and whatnot, other than providing for the integrity of the envelope itself, the outside of the building on the four sides, the second and third floors are now excluded from our deal, the city's deal, with Belknap Economic Development Council. And so what's being finalized now from an arrangement standpoint is that Rusty McClear and his wife will either lease or buy, that hasn't been determined yet immediately, the second and third floors. Okay? So they'll have the option of either leasing it for five years, like we're doing with the theater part from B E D C, or they may buy it right away, in which case they would be the owners. The condominium documents are being prepared now, so that at closing, which is expected to be on or about October 1st, if they decide they want to buy the second and third floor and not lease it, then the condominium documents would go into effect immediately, and they would be the condominium owners of the second and third floors. Now, at some point in time, they may further decide that they want to sell the individual apartments as condominiums, in which case they would have to create another condominium to do that, so there'd be individual owners of one or more of the apartments as well. But that's none of our business, so to speak. But yes, down the road, let's say in year six, there's a possibility, if there's 10 apartments there, if all 10 of those have separate owners, plus the theater, and we could have a condominium association with 10 or more parties that are party to the condominium agreement.
Okay.
And we all have, just like in any condominium agreement, we all have obligations to each other. Meaning, we have to take care of our own responsibilities, but we also have common ownership of taking care of the envelope of the building. So if the roof has to be replaced, or it leaks, or something like that, we would all have to bear our share based on a square feet basis of doing that.
And that isn't the situation with the parking garage?
How would we characterize the par, our obligation, as I understand it, on the parking garage is to make sure that the commercial spaces on the first floor, the ground floor, have structural integrity from a roof standpoint, because we own their roof in effect, and we have responsibility for their roof. And my understanding is that's the extent of our liability there. If their roof leaks, we're responsible for it, but other than that, we don't have any responsibility.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else like to offer testimony? Yes, sir.
My name is John Pelletier, I live on 129 South Main Street.
You get a...
Whoops, sorry. My name is John Pelletier, I live on 129 South Main Street, Laconia. And I'm wondering if we got out of this theater project altogether, would we save money in the long run? Because it seems like every time there's, we're for getting more and more money for this, and I don't see where the benefit's going to be that great to the city.
So to simply answer your question, as I understood it, right now, we have $1.4 million invested in the theater project. And our collateral is the building itself. That's a loan as of now, and our collateral on that loan is $1.4 million. So if we were to get out of the project as you put right now, we'd be into this for $1.4 million, and we would own that empty building, basically, is what it amounts to. So you can take from that what you will in terms of what our exposure would be. So what's under consideration now and up for final vote tonight is to borrow $6.7 million and put another 6.7 for a total of $8.1 million into it. And I think what the discussions we've had here at the council level, and the council has signed on to, is the concept that we are in effect buying a municipal auditorium, which the city does not currently have. And a spectacular city auditorium, if, as it is, in terms of restoring the Colonial Theater to its historic grandeur. But that's what, so whether you look at it as a library, or the football stadium, or any other civic amenity, that's exactly what it would be, whether you think that's a good idea or not. It would be a public city auditorium, and it would, it'll cost us $8.1 million. One could argue that it's going to be worth significantly more than that when the project is finished. Anyone else?
I groaned when I stood up. I'll, I understand the gentleman, his concerns. I think that the council and the mayor ought to be commended for taking this leap forward. I think it's forward. I think, again, for some of us that have been around a long time, there is still some ghost in this city for all the buildings that the city let go. And I don't think the city ever recovered from that, quite frankly. I don't think that putting them all in, taking them all out, it just didn't, it just didn't cut it. And I think this is potentially a very good thing, and I think, you know, I just, I just think this is a good thing to do. I hope that the funding of it works out in the long run. I just, I just want to say that. I really think this is something that we all need to bite the bullet, so to speak, and go forward with it. But I do understand the last speaker's concerns, because I get that, and I, but we have to have, I have faith that this is gonna, this is going to be a very good thing for the city. And then we'll get the banner poles up, and then we'll get...
Maybe not that big a deal.
Yeah, I know, and the lights and some other, what a package we're going to have here, so that's all. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? If not, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name's Davey Conns. This is 743 Union Ave, and I, what are the dimensions of your building? The width and the length?
Of which building?
The building, the Colonial Theater.
It's actually three buildings.
Okay, well, three buildings, what is the square footage, the total square footage?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
You don't know?
No, I don't know.
Okay, well, you know, it's an old building, kind of outdated. Would it be cheaper to tear the building down and put a new structure up? A modern apartment complex or a condominium complex?
Well, I have done some research, I have done some research on that, and from what I can tell, looking around the country at municipalities that have done this, or private concerns that have done this, to build a new, nice, not spectacular, but nice, 750-seat auditorium with the appropriate amenities and whatnot, would cost probably at least $10 million.
$10 million?
Yes, from scratch.
But you don't know the actual square footage of all the units combined?
Well, somebody does.
Okay, but no one here knows, has that information, because... Okay, but no one here knows, has any information, because?
We don't have that in front of us here tonight.
At the cost of the, 7 million bucks, 8 million dollars to repair that old building, it's the four walls and roof and the adjacent structures, that seems to be quite a bit of money to renovate.
It's more than eight, that, 6.7 and eight is just our share of it.
Okay.
It's a...
Is it a city asset right now?
No, not legally.
Is it a liability to you?
Well, we have 1.4 million dollars out on loan, we don't own anything at this point legally.
Okay, would it be more profitable to just get rid of the property, put the money in your pocket, the city's pocket, or get into this?
We have 1.4 million dollars out on loan, and there's no way in you-know-what that we could ever get 1.4 million dollars back out of it.
It's not worth that much?
It's not.
So you want to put eight more million, seven more million into it? Something that's not even worth what you owe on it?
Because when we're finished with it, it'll be worth a lot more.
You think it's gonna be worth more?
Yes.
But it's an old building, renovated from the inside. The outside is still old-looking.
A lot of the outside renovation too, new roof, et cetera.
Just, well...
It's still gonna be cheaper because of the other funding sources we have than to build new.
What has driven you to want to do this to that old building?
The city's love for that building and its historical significance.
Okay, historical, but it's 220. Are the movie theater gonna be there again?
Is what?
Will there be a movie theater there again?
No.
There are...
We will have the ability to show movies, but it will not be a movie theater.
It will be a performing arts center.
It will be a public auditorium.
Oh, for public events?
Public events, you can rent it and put a symphony orchestra in there, or have a rock concert, or whatever, a play.
All the money you're gonna spend on it, will you be able to recuperate that money and get, make a profit on it?
Let me ask you this, if we built a new library, would we get our money back?
No.
All right, it's a public amenity, it's something the city wants and needs. And it's very common in the United States for cities to have this as an amenity for its citizens.
All righty, well, I just, was wondering, because I, I just, um, wish you the best of luck with that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other que- any other comment? All right, if not, I'm gonna, oops, I'm sorry, one more?
I'd like to know, if you can't recoup that one 4 million ever, what on, why on earth did you have a loan go to, to this economic council for them to purchase the building?
So we could get a colonial theater built.
Because that was the price we had to pay to buy the property. And we overpaid for it, knowing we had overpaid for it. I mean, that's a simple answer. But in the long run, once it's redone, we believe it'll be worth far more than, than, than that, in terms of its value, because of the historic nature of the building. Anyone else? Mr. Wood?
Mr. Mayor, Patrick Wood, councilors. We've had five of our kids go through the Laconia High School, and they've all been involved, one way or the other, in different events, many of them involved in plays. And those of you who are familiar with the Laconia High School know how difficult it is to have a play in that particular auditorium. The opportunity, just for the high school, to have a facility like this, will put Laconia at the top of all of the high schools in this state. There will not be a better facility. So that alone, from my perspective, says this is something worthwhile doing. But there are so many other organizations that will be able to use this facility as well. This is a great investment, it's a lot of money, but it's worth it because it says something about us and our community, and how we believe in our community and the future. So I'm very much in favor of it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna declare this public hearing, uh, closed at 7:34 PM. And as I said, we'll be taking this matter up for a second and final reading tonight, uh, under unfinished business. Second public hearing we have tonight, I call your attention, councilors, to page 24 of your packet and page 40. This is a public hearing for the proposed amendment to the Laconia City Charter for Acceptance and Expenditure of Unanticipated Funds Made Available During the Fiscal Year per RSA 31:95/B. I want to give you the short version of this, as I said, the resolution itself is back on page 40 of your packet. But this is tonight, what we're going to be doing by passing this later on in the meeting, assuming it passes, is to put this measure before the voters in November. This is a city charter amendment, so it has to go before the voters, and what we would be doing is placing that on the ballot tonight. And this is a pretty simple measure. It simply says that if the city is in receipt during a given year of, of donations of less than 10,000 dollars, it will not be necessary for the city to hold a public hearing as to whether or not it wants to accept those. As it is now, if we get a 20-dollar donation from somebody, we have to hold a public hearing on whether or not it's advantageous for the city to accept that 20 bucks. And this would, would alleviate that part of the meetings that we would have to, to take care of and allow the city manager's office to handle these matters administratively. So notice of this public hearing was made available in the July 11, 2019 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, at the Community Center, at the Public Library, and the S A U office. So I'm going to open this public hearing at 7:36 PM and ask if there's anyone with us tonight who would like to offer comment to the city council on the matter of placing this measure on the ballot as a city ordinance amendment in November 2019. Well, all right, I'm gonna declare this public hearing closed at 7:37 PM. And again, repeat that we'll take this matter up tonight under unfinished business. Next up is the mayor's report, and I would like, one item I'd like to bring to the council's attention tonight or in the form of a report, and that is that, as with the city, the end of the fiscal year for the Laconia Airport Authority was on June 30th of this year, and we had our, our first board meeting since then last week. And I can report to you in general, um, my last such report as mayor about the airport authority, of which I am the chair statutorily, uh, that the, I think it's no exaggeration to say that financially, the Laconia Airport is in better shape right now than it has ever been in its existence. And, and some numbers to back that up, uh, our, our revenue for, operating revenue for the year just completed was about 360,000 dollars. And our operating margin profit, if we were a profit-driven organization, was 90,000 dollars. So we had an operating margin of 25% in this past year, which is pretty remarkable. And, and I will, that, I will say that that is unlikely to continue at that sort of rate, because this year, um, I think I've explained this to you all before. We have a philosophy, which I think has been very solid in recent years, of, of using operating margin largely to make improvements to the terminal and the other facilities at the airport that do not qualify for federal matching funds, where we have to pay the whole bill ourselves. So we keep, we keep our reserve funds on hand, and our reserve funds, by the way, were 20, $2,000, under a million dollars, which is the highest total ever. So we're, our, our, our net worth, if you will, is in cash assets and whatnot, is just under, a hair under a million dollars at this point in time, which again is an all-time high for the airport. And we use those funds for matching funds for projects that do, uh, qualify for federal funding, that require a match on, a 5% match on our part. The most recent one, which I had mentioned the last time I updated you on the airport, was the rebuilding, reconstruction of Taxiway E. And that pro- that 3 million dollar project is underway right now. Uh, and will be finished by the middle of September at the latest, apparently. And then that's going to open up, uh, that reconstruction of Taxiway E is going to open up, um, at least, uh, I don't know, depending on how big the lots are, six to 10 more one-way access lots where people can build and, build hangars and whatnot. And we've already getting, I'm told we're already getting, uh, interest from people who might want to buy to build a hangar on and lease their space for us on those new lots. So that will hopefully generate some more income for the airport. So, uh, but the one thing I would caution you on, because the next mayor is gonna have to give you a reported year from now on this, is that operating margin is, is probably twice as high as it has been in recent years. And the simplest explanation for that is that a number of, of projects that we were going to fund didn't get done during this fiscal year for whatever reason. And so they've been put off till, till the current fiscal year, the new fiscal year. So we're gonna be spending more money this fiscal year with, with some of that money left over and whatnot, making improvements, uh, in and around the airport. And we've made a tremendous amount of improvements, uh, over the last five years at the airport. And I think it's, it's not an exaggeration to say that our terminal and related amenities are the envy of all the rest of the state in terms of general aviation airports. There's no, no airport in the state, a general aviation airport in the state that comes close to the amenities that we now offer, uh, at, at our airport and at our terminal. So I think you all can be very proud of the people that have been appointed to that, uh, oversight board and the job that they have done, and the job that Marv Iverson has done as the manager of the airport. It's been amazing and outstanding, a very good choice. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about the airport, if you have any, but, uh, that's my brief report on the, the state of the airport, Laconia Airport, which is, uh, fiscally excellent condition. Committee reports, I know we had a meeting tonight of the Land and Buildings Committee. Councilor Hamill, do you have a report on that?
I do, thank you, Mayor. This evening, Land and Buildings Committee met, uh, at 6:15 to discuss the condition of the parking garage. And Wes Colby, the director of Public Works, was here to present, uh, to us the condition of the garage, uh, the cost to refurbish it, and, uh, a timeframe. Everybody has a packet in their mailboxes, uh, of the, uh, of the, uh, schematics and the cost and evaluation of the garage done by Du Bois and King, and a representative from their, uh, their firm was here, uh, so we could ask them questions and things. So basically, where we're at right now, I believe, is a lot more further discussion on where we're gonna go with it, because of the cost, the timeframe, uh, what the council actually wants to do with it, you know, which direction you want to take. So, um, I, I think we're gonna have to have some more meetings and find out, uh, where all the councilors are on this, what we're gonna do in the future. It's a project, uh, if you do it, it's gonna be there another 20, 30 years. There's a cost associated with that, and part of that is gonna be how we're gonna fund it. So that would involve in the future, you know, possibly, uh, you know, uh, pay for parking, and that sum of money would go help reduce the, uh, the cost of the city as far as the interest and principal on that parking garage. So Wes is still here, I don't know if any other councilors would like to ask him questions, or if you want to ask me a question, that may be referred to Wes anyway. But, uh, it's kind of where we stand right now, it's, what do we do?
Any comments or concerns by the rest of the council?
I, I just was concerned that Wes Colby would have had to come all the way from North Carolina to...
Oh, did I say Wes, I'm, I'm... Wes Anderson, so, that's a name from the past, wasn't it?
Yes, yes.
For some reason, I tied that together.
So, so one, one comment I would make is, uh, I, I think that, um, several of us not on your committee were able to attend your hearing and listen to the, to the report and comments and whatnot. And I thought that, uh, I thought that Pat Wood's comment was right on the money from my perspective, and that was that, that we have to look at the, the overall downtown parking picture and not look at the garage in, in, in a, in the narrowest sense of the word, in terms of what is our long-term plan, to the extent that we know it or can make it, and how does that building fit into that plan, if it does at all? And, and plus, we have the whole issue that was brought up at the meeting, as you know, that you commented on, uh, councilor, is, you know, the whole issue of paid parking versus free parking, and how that enters into it. And, and so there's, there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of moving parts. And, and I, I think he was right on the money, not that, to remind us all that we needed to look at a total solution on this, and a long-term solution as opposed to fixing one particular building.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, I, I think that's, you know, the council as a whole's gonna have to come up with some kind of decision on that, of, of how we move forward in the future on this. Uh, we do have responsibility in it. You know, like you said, of, uh, making sure the deck's solid for the, for the commercial stores underneath it. So, you know, you're looking at, uh, spending 4.5 million or 10 million for a new one or more. So, you know, it's a decision we gotta make as a council to see which direction we're gonna go with this. It's, it's there.
Well, and I think, but I think that also, the other, so, the, the other variable that I think is in play that has to do with the, the proposal, the paid parking proposal, I accent the word proposal, that's before Councilor Balance Committee at this point in time, is that another discussion we need to have, a serious discussion, is not only the pay versus free argument, but the, the discussion about where does the public's obligation extend in this area? As opposed to the private sector's obligation for providing parking?
Correct.
You know, we just had a mention of that earlier tonight, and as far as T-Bones and Cactus Jacks is concerned, they're, you know, they have leased parking for their employees in a, on property they don't own. And the city didn't provide that parking, they provided it themselves. And I think that's a, that's a very fundamental question we have here. Typically, around the country, I think it's fair to say that cities have been willing to put public money into parking facilities with the expectation that those facilities would pay for themselves by having people pay to park.
Yep.
As opposed to providing a facility, certainly a multi-story structure, with the expectation that the taxpayers are gonna pay for it, and no one's ever gonna pay to park there.
Correct. So that's why the whole situation has to be looked at.
Yeah.
You can't have one place pay and then the others not. Dave, go ahead.
Councilor Balance?
As you know, I've, um, been a pretty vocal critic. I use that, well, I've been a vocal critic of the downtown parking garage. I'm looking at the alternatives, uh, that were presented with respect to some kind of reclamation or repair, uh, of that monstrosity downtown that's gonna last us 20 to 30 years at most, and come back as a potential nightmare in as little as five to 10 years. That's just what I've been saying for a while. I say that because the alternatives, either one or two, repair all three decks, two, repair two of the decks, and shut down the third, um, from my perspective, not acceptable. And, you know, we've gotta look for another alternative that does not include the downtown parking garage as providing parking on a long-term basis for Laconia. That's my, my own opinion. On a second front, I regret that I was unable to attend a committee meeting I had last week with respect to the parking issue. It is my understanding that, um, there was some kind of informal agreement that came out of that, uh, committee, that, that meeting, that, uh, we would try to put some time with the help of the downtown business owners to put together some type of a survey, uh, that would give us an idea of what downtown businesses would be impacted, how many employees we're talking about. And I assume that would include the... about, and I assume that would include the post office and Genesis and all of that, so that we can get some kind of an idea of what the impact is before we discuss the real necessity, I think a necessity, but I've been an advocate for a while too, of some kind of paid parking structure. And I'm, and I'm not sure what form that takes, or how it takes, but I know that we've got a meeting scheduled for the 12th, is that right? And with the consent of the Government Operations and Ordinances Committee, that would be Councilor Hosmer and Councilor Cheney. I want to postpone that meeting until we get the survey done, I think that'll be in short order, and that when we come back for our next meeting of the City Council, we'll have an idea of when that survey will be available, and we'll be able to schedule the next meeting of the parking committee issue. So I'm, I'm suggesting that we postpone the August 12th meeting until we get that survey completed. It's going to be a simple survey, how many people parked down there, what's your business, how many people parked down there, fairly simple to, to get that information together. So, that's my proposal with respect to the next committee meeting, and I'm telling you what I think about the downtown parking garage, surprise, surprise.
The Council of Balance is suggesting then that the, the meeting, the scheduled meeting of the Government Operations and Ordinances Committee is scheduled for October, or sorry, October, August 12th be postponed until a later date, until the survey he's referring to was, came out of a meeting of the Downtown Chief Advisory Committee last week, of which the city manager and myself attended, was a vigorous, I would say, discussion amongst all those concerned. I can see somebody smiling in the back row here who is a participant. And as the councilor advised you, at, at the end of that meeting, we, we informally agreed that, that we needed a simple survey, and we're going to, we're going to work that up here at City Hall with their approval, and then the downtown, the members of the Downtown Chief Advisory Committee have volunteered to personally take that survey around to the various business owners and building owners around downtown, and see that those forms are filled out, and we get as accurate a picture as we can as to what the employee parking needs are for downtown. Okay, so is there any objection to that from the council, the committee members? Okay, so we'll just wait for...
What I'll, what we'll do is we'll wait for whatever the survey is, we'll bring it up at whatever, the next council meeting or the following council meeting, I hope we get, by that time we got the survey, we'll just schedule another meeting.
All right, any other committee business tonight? Councilor Hamill?
Um, I think I'd like to schedule another Land and Buildings Committee meeting on August 26th at probably 6:30. And it's just to kind of let everybody read the material that we've received, and...
On the parking garage again?
Yep, on the parking garage. And then come back that night and try and have some kind of discussion of maybe some kind of direction.
Okay.
Because I think the Public Works Director kind of needs to know, I mean, it doesn't have to be the 26th, obviously.
All right, Councilor Hamill moves to schedule a meeting of the Lands and Buildings Committee for 6:30 PM on Monday, August 26th, to discuss Item 1, the downtown parking garage. Is there a second to that motion? Councilor Cheney, second, consider any discussion. All's in favor of scheduling that meeting, please raise a hand. Six votes affirm that that motion is scheduled.
Thank you.
Or that meeting is scheduled. Any other committee business tonight? Councilor?
At the last planning board meeting, which unfortunately I missed due to a really good committee...
Again, is this the same one now you missed, or is this two in a row?
No, this was, this was, no, no, that committee meeting was, I missed because of business obligations. The planning board meeting, I missed because of family obligations, and I had a great time, by the way. So, at that, um, uh, planning board meeting, which was, is always the first Tuesday in the month, the short-term residential rental business or short-term leasing proposal was referred to a committee. The proposed historic overlay district was referred to a committee. The committee on short-term rental businesses met, and at that time, there were some, what I'll call minor tweaks to the proposal. That will, I think, the, the hope is that that will go back to the planning board meeting for its first meeting in August, that, that will be tweaked somewhat, and that it will go out to public, to a public hearing for the September meeting, so...
So when you say to a committee, you mean a subcommittee of the planning board?
Yeah, subcommittee, subcommittee. And there was a meeting of both of those committees last week. It was last week, wasn't it? Yeah. The proposed historic overlay district also met last week. While no firm proposal was adopted, there is another meeting scheduled for July 29th, 30th, at 5 o'clock, I think, and it's hopeful, by scheduling it in that timeframe, that some kind of a proposal will come out of the committee for the planning board's consideration at either its first meeting in August or its first meeting in September, to keep this on track. So I would anticipate that in the August, September timeframe, there will be some kind of a proposal from the planning board for an historic overlay district that will, I think, include, as we've discussed in the past, the railway station, Veterans Square, Park, whatever it is, the library, and the St. Joseph property. And I think that that will be the focus, the initial focus of the historic overlay district. So I anticipate that going out to a public hearing for either, if we're lucky, in August for a September meeting, if there's more work to be done, in September for an October meeting, and then coming back for the council thereafter. So look for that in September or October. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee business? About liaison reports.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Haynes.
As far as the Heritage Commission is concerned, the July meeting was adjourned when members were asked to recuse themselves when the subject of St. Joseph's Church came up, and consequently, that they will seek legal counsel before any other, before the next meeting.
Is that, is that being done? What's the status of that?
Yes, we are coordinating with staff, Dean and I, Dean Trevethan, Planning Director, who was staffed to the Heritage Commission, are arranging that, Dean's taking the lead. We thought it would make sense that the entire Heritage Commission was a part of that conversation, so we could use it as an educational component. We're waiting through tonight's vote when you get a new member, so we also can have the new member be able to be a part of that, and we are looking to put that together as we speak. I know we were talking about dates as of Friday, so I would expect that's happening probably within the next week, definitely before the next Heritage Commission meeting.
So I guess what comes to mind there, to both of you, is, is the, the authority to form and appoint and duties of and all that, the Heritage Commission, that, that's a local ordinance, correct?
Yes.
So it's not, it's not defined by the state?
Broadly, the role of a Heritage Commission or a Historic Commission is defined in state statutes, but...
It is.
The nuances of the powers and the levels of authority are local decisions that you craft with your ordinance.
So, it, I mean, I, I think I understand what the, what the attorney who objected that night was, was driving at, but in the, in the sense that we have given, or state law has given, I don't, that's what I'm asking, which, has given some authority and power to the Heritage Commission in terms of what they can do, all right? And, and so one could argue, as apparently that attorney was doing that night, that they have some quasi-legal authority in terms of the decisions they reach and whatnot, and, and that therefore they're, they're in effect a jury. And they're, they're, but on the other hand, it's not a secret, and this is not a, in an effort on my part at all to, to have any negative connotation to this at all, but I think that we have, as we have appointed people, and people have applied to be members of that commission over the years, we certainly did so with our eyes being wide open, that these were people who were particularly interested in historical preservation, and, and certainly had a bias in that direction. So, if, if there really is a legal issue with them serving as judge and jury, it seems like the very structure that we created provides an inherent conflict there.
I think having, having a leaning in that direction is certainly part of why someone would choose to serve on the Heritage Commission, or you would expect that somebody volunteering for the Conservation Commission would be looking to preserve natural resources of some kind, I think that's a given. I think when you get to a point where you're making statements about, I've got a bias against this, or a statement like, there's no way I would ever approve that, clouds an applicant's opportunity to be able to submit materials, offer testimony, and at least have it be received before a decision is made. And I think that's the difference that's happening here. So no doubt that folks on the Heritage Commission value significant buildings in the community, everybody gets that.
Are predisposed to want to preserve them.
Right. But let's say that the same, let's just say it's a whole different building, and it had historic value, and there was complete rot from termites or underground springs, and it was a danger to the public. Would the right decision still be then, there's no way will that building come down, versus we've tried everything we can, and the cost and the public danger afford that to come down? I think that's the request, is that folks, when they are deliberating on applications, should not be predisposed and publicly predisposed, because that makes it...
So how about if a member or members of the Heritage Commission are actively out organizing people to rise up in opposition to whatever is being proposed?
That is probably teeing one up and lobbing it over the plate for an opposing legal counsel.
Andrew, Mark?
More like a T-ball.
Somebody who is not a member of a Heritage Commission, who has not taken that office and done the oath to, you know, fulfill obligations, can go out and rally the troops and be the ravel rouser all they want. You wear a different hat when you're a member of a city board or commission, and it's not that you still can't be leaning a certain way, it's you need to be...
Well, I could argue, given what you just said, that we have been a little bit derelict in our own duties in terms of appointing people by not pointing that out when they applied.
I would disagree with that, Mayor.
I, I don't think we've, I just, I mean...
Just disagree with it, we considered applications with earnest, earnestness, we considered all applications with earnestness, there was no dereliction of duty whatsoever with respect to who's been appointed on the Heritage Commission.
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is, should it be our duty to, to advise applicants to that commission of what, where that line is that the, that the, that the city manager is pointing out?
I think the fact that the, they took a pause at the last meeting and seeking counsel is an appropriate response to the situation. I think any, as the manager's pointing out, any board that has authority pointed by the council has certain obligations to, to follow. And certainly, you know, we've had other situations where we've had to review statements or actions and, and take remedial counseling to make sure people are fulfilling their obligations the way they're supposed to be fulfilled.
I, you know, I for one, I for one, want to appoint people to the commissions, whether it's Conservation or the Historic Commission or whatever it is. I want to, I want to appoint people who have a passion for it, who want to explore the issues, who say, I don't want somebody on the Historic Commission that doesn't give a damn about the store nature of the city of Laconia, what's the point of that? I want advocates there, and I want them to be advocates, so...
Yeah, I think that's the issue that's been raised by the attorney, though, is should those people still be in, also in a position to, to be jury?
Well, I got an opinion on that, and that's yes, but I'll let legal counsel sort through all that stuff with respect to what's, what's, what crosses the line and what doesn't cross the line. But, you know, again...
The manager, the manager said it correctly, which is that there should be impartiality with respect to considering information before, before it, and where it's in the public interest. You know, as the example he gave, if there was a structure that wasn't salvageable or represented a, a potential risk to the public, that, that to ignore those issues would not be doing their job.
Councilor?
I, I, maybe I'm missing something here, but I think, I agree with both of these gentlemen, but I also agree with your suggestion, I think, that, that we do more when we're appointing these people, to make them aware of the constraints that they ought to live under. And I don't think that's suggesting that, that we're going to appoint people who don't care.
No.
Just appoint people who are, are made aware of what their obligations are. I think the manager's effort to use this as a teaching tool is, is a great idea, but maybe we ought to encapsulate it and use it in the future for new members of some of these boards.
That's what I was suggesting, thank you.
The Municipal Association offers all kinds of educational opportunities for all boards and commissions, that I think the city is pretty diligent about letting all of the members of various boards know about those opportunities. And the hope is that you take advantage of those opportunities and educate themselves. But certainly, there's nothing wrong with saying to the Conservation, any, any potential candidate for whatever board, you know, here's, here's a particular standard, these are your obligations, do you think you can follow that? That's not harmful at all.
So, anyway, thank you, Councilor. Any other liaison reports tonight? Okay, citizens' request to comment on current agenda items. This is the spot in our agenda tonight where we welcome any comment from our audience with regard to any item that is on tonight's agenda. Does that description strike anyone? No? Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's report, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So included in your packet for this, this second meeting of the month, you have two updates, I'm going to go through them pretty quickly, because I've got a couple of items that are not included in your packet that I was asked to report on, or want to offer up a couple of items to you as well. So let's get into the road projects. The Core Street Phase 1 basically is done, we got a few little tie-ins on a couple of, of grassy areas around the sidewalks and some of those areas, but for the most part, that project is done and is looking very solid. We are continuing, continuing with what we refer to as Core Street Phase 2, which is coming from where we stopped at Fair Street, all the way to the intersection at Main Street, so you can, you know, we're working on some sewer upgrades in that area now. We are continuing to work on Messer Street, a water department for all intents and purposes is out of there, we're tying in the storm drain work, which we had started last fall behind the DuTeil property, or in the DuTeil property, in conjunction with the drawdown of the lake. That project, we seem to be on good track with, we're probably figuring four weeks from today, mid-August, to be completely done with the drainage work, the final water work, and then the reclaiming and the paving of that road. So, that one, we do have a, a light at the end of the tunnel within a few weeks, so to speak. I shared with you all some information about the shim work that we did on Union Ave from Busy Corner up to the intersection at Main Street, knowing full well that a portion of that we're going to get to in a couple of years with major reconstruction, and actually the end from Main Street up in front of Sunrise Towers a little bit. That road was getting somewhat deteriorated, and we still need to make a couple of more utility cuts in through there to get the work done. We knew that going into it, that's why I share with you, we didn't want to lose any more of that road, having a real thin layer of a shim allows us to do some nice, clean cuts and keep that road in good workable condition. So, we and our Public Works Director really need all of you to be ambassadors when someone says, hey, they just paved that road, why are they cutting into that? When someone says, hey, they just paved that road, why are they cutting into that? You've got the information now as to, as to why we did it. So I'm hoping for seven ambassadors out there in the field right now. Moving along from the construction, a couple of other projects. The Riverwalk behind City Hall and down up to Church Street now was completed. The fencing is in, the bridge was in last fall, so that looks nice with the work done, for the most part, at the Best Western. We've started the Riverwalk section behind the Best Western down to Row Court, so that is proceeding. We just delayed that a little bit while the Best Western work was going on there. Irrigation has been in for several weeks now at the Memorial Park Softball Field. It was completed, I believe, last week at Wyatt Park, so both of those are in and running. And I can take questions there, or you can let me run through, and I'll take all questions at the end, whatever you like. The Economic Development Report, again, unemployment, I don't have to sound like a broken record every month, but we are at full employment, and there are hiring challenges in, in our region, in our state. The June, excuse me, the June CPI figure is out at 1.6, so halfway through this calendar year, we're running 1.7% for inflation. And again, that's one of the figures that we use when we do our budget, which we just adopted two weeks ago. So I'm not trying to get back in budget season, but we will be using the CPI in our tax cap calculation. Couple of other items I wanna bring to your attention. We are doing some sewer lining on Court Street on some evenings this week. So new sewer pipes going in, and these are the lining company, and they're gonna come in and work through the overnight. So you will be seeing a few detours in the overnight hours from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM on Court Street when they do that work for the next couple of nights, so sharing that with you. Wanted to bring to your attention, there is a, a great dedicated group of four or five individuals who have kinda taken the lead on trying to raise some funds and do some outreach to interested parties on milfoil, especially in Pogus Bay Area. So this group is reaching out to marinas, to cottage colonies, to business owners whose livelihood, you know, thrives with great quality water and milfoil, some of the condo associations, homeowners associations, and are really stepping it up and, and starting to do some fundraising to help match and make the city's dollars and what appears to be shrinking dollars from the Department of Environmental Services' milfoil program go further. And it's not that the DES dollars are shrinking, there's just more applications and the expense is going up. So their, their piece of the pie just doesn't go as far anymore. To that end, they're actually doing a, in addition to the letter and, and phone call campaigning that they're doing, they're doing a fundraising event, a comedy show at the Margate coming up on Thursday night, August 29th. They've gone out and solicited some corporate sponsorships and all those dollars are staying locally for milfoil right here in La Conia. So a great effort. They've put together a, a nonprofit entity, you know, the Legalese, to, you know, receive the money and be able to share it. So I wanna thank them and the work they're doing there. Couple of items that were brought up at the last meeting that I was asked to provide an update on in no particular order. One was the, the abandoned rundown house on Court Street, and what is the status with that? On our property tax records, that property is owned by George C. Stafford and Sons Incorporated. They also own a couple of adjacent properties to that. Nothing official, but staff, and my understanding is that at some point in the future, there's a larger master planning of those particular parcels, and something is going to happen there. But nothing definitive that's been submitted or we've been made aware of at this point. So that's who own the, who owns the building, and we know of something potentially in the future, but nothing firm to offer up on you on that.
Is that the house right next to the Stafford? Who raised that issue?
Yes.
Somebody did.
Counselor Jean, you did.
Counselor Jean, you did.
Yep. Little history on the skate park, that was the second item I was asked to touch base on. So the skate park over next to the Water Street Cafe and behind the corner of the police station, opened in October of 2004 in conjunction with some of the students at the Hewitt Building and Trades Class. They built the skate elements out of wood. Wood is not the preferred material to be using for skate elements because it doesn't hold up to the winters and the, the use that it takes. But this was a way to kinda get the park together without a lot of dollars out of pocket, you know, have the students be able to build some things that potentially they're gonna be using at the skate park. But those elements ran out of their useful life, probably starting in 2011, 12, 13, and we pulled out over the course of several years, some of the dangerous ones, until the point there were, there was nothing left in there. There has been some money requested for that through the CIP process over several years. It just hasn't risen to the level of prioritizing either the CIP Committee or with competing funds for other projects here in the city. Concrete is actually the preferred use even over some of the man-made structures that you can, you know, look on the internet and find companies who build these elements with different ramps and twists and loops and jumps and everything to them. But concrete seems to be the way to go. Looking at some general information out there, reasonable ballpark number is about $45 a square foot to fit out your skate park. That's gonna be skewed a little bit by the fact that we already have an existing area. We've got fencing, we've already got some parking available and stuff. So depending on what elements it could look into and the size of that area, you know, it could probably come in at under $45 a square foot. But in terms of a raw number, realistically, $75,000 is probably what would be needed to fit that out. We certainly would wanna work with folks who know much more about skate parks than I do and what are the good elements to have versus, you know, what somebody sitting behind a desk thinks might be a good element. So we could certainly try to firm that number up a little bit. But $75,000 would be a ballpark number, I think, to have the right type of material and the right type of elements there.
That's a, if I could, from, from personal observation of other facilities in other parts of the country and other towns in the Lakes Region area, our facility is very small.
Absolutely. Some of these are, you know, going on for 100, 200 yards, so you're really making a run, and you're in half tubes and different stuff.
So if we're talking about paying by the square foot, I think the, the facility behind the police station is not a good example of square footage.
Right. And again, it's there, the fencing is there, some of the amenities, so it's just a matter of some concrete. So that's where I think $75,000 might be a top-end number, but that, I think, is a, a number to shoot for. I don't believe there's an active group out there right now that's trying to fundraise. I know Meredith did something recently and had a group and raised some funds, and they were able to apply for a grant through the Tony Hawk Foundation and receive a $25,000, which was the high end of the grant that was offered. But in looking at it, it has to be some community fundraiser money, some skin in the game, so to speak, other than just taxpayer dollars. So if there were a group that were trying to do something, there's no guarantee, but that organization does try to fund a number of projects every year. And, but one of their criteria is, you know, there needs to be some fundraising effort and skin in the game locally versus just through a budgetary process.
Counselor Voland.
In its prime, was it well-used?
Its prime is probably before I got here, but anecdotally, I hear, yes, it was, and I think a lot of people would like to see it, and it covers, it covers a wide range of ages, ages as well. It's not just, you know, a, a youth to teenager. I mean, there are young adults into, you know, millennial age who...
Anybody at this table?
The third topic I was asked to comment on was kiosks. I give a little history of the, a couple of years we've had kiosks now down at, at Weers Beach. So we have just started or in the middle of, of year three of operation. We've got two kiosks that handle Weers Beach Parking Lot, and we've got another 13 that cover various sides of Lakeside Avenue. It's a little different system than in some communities where you might have a pay and display where you walk to the kiosk and you come back to your car and you put it on your dashboard. This being that we only use the kiosk down there from Memorial Day to Columbus Day. We bought a few fewer kiosks because we were able to number every parking space and not using them in the middle of the winter when those numbers wouldn't be visible. People can walk down, just enter their parking space number into it and not have to come back to their car. So they're spaced a little further than some other communities. The other thing to remember is that we have controlled entrance points over the rail onto the boardwalk, so it's not that people can cut through over the fence. So where we've got them strategically placed works. But again, you might see a little bit more dense installation of kiosks in some of the, you know, urban centers that are using them year-round and do a, do a pay and display. But Concord Parking Garage, at least one of them I know, has it by the number. So you just pull in, you look at your number, and you come down to the bottom of the stairs, and you plug your number in and do it our way. And it will print you a receipt if you want it for your own personal purposes, but you don't have to get a receipt to it. We do shut ours down every winter, and we do remove a couple of them that are in areas that might be in danger of snowplows. So we usually have a little startup glitch in the spring just through the software of getting them going again because most communities keep them running on a year-round basis, and we do shut them down. Two and a half years now, we've had three part failures across the board. One was a modem card, one was a battery, and more recently, right now, was a credit card reader. So we're taking care of those, but for the most part, they've been, you know, very solid and, and good workhorses for us. We do pay about $30 a month to have the communication there to send out the signal and transmit credit card information, and they'll send notices if there's a partial failure of, I'm out of paper, or, you know, I'm not operating for some reason. We can get electronic messages. And we recently enrolled in a PartSmart program, so for about $20 a kiosk a month, we can swap out failed parts at no cost. So it's kinda like buying an extended warranty, if you will, on that. So about $50 a month for the six months for each one that we operate them as far as ongoing expense. And then a couple of cases of paper for a few hundred bucks a season gets us through for those people who wanna print out receipts to it. In terms of revenue, the two full years, we've done somewhere around $180,000 to $190,000 in revenue across both Lakeside Ave and the Weers Parking Lot. That breaks down to be about $140,000 on Lakeside and about $45,000 in the Beach Parking Lot. Of the money that's collected in the Beach Parking Lot, the first $25,000 goes to the general fund. You'll see a specific line item in your budget book. Anything above and beyond that goes into a Weers Beach Improvement Fund. Could be for beach, could be for bathhouses, and anything's like, anything like that. So that's how that money's broken down. We're seeing probably 85, closer to 90% of our transactions are done electronically, so they're through a credit card or debit card. Not a whole lot of cash going on down there. Street parking is a dollar an hour. We've got various points along the boulevard that we worked with the owners. Some is two-hour parking, some's three hours, some's five hour. That's tied into location to the Mount Washington, for instance, where you need more than two hours, or maybe in front of some of the arcade stores where they want the turnover a little quicker. So there's different signage down there that identifies what the parking is at a dollar an hour. The Beach Parking Lot is $2 an hour. They kinda describe that as stadium seating, so the closer you are to home plate or the 50-yard line, those seats are a little more expensive. So parking rate at the beach is a little more expensive, and that's $2 an hour. And there's no limit. So if somebody were to wanna pull in at, you know, 9:00 in the morning and pay for all day until 10:00 at night, they can, they can pay for it, and they're not required to, to move the cars. We do have handheld devices that our enforcement folks go around, and they can pull up the screen and basically, I'll tell you what my screen looks like. I don't know if theirs is exactly the same, but if it's a red dot next to a space number, it means there's been no money paid for that space, so to speak. If there's a green dot, it means it's got time on the meter. So they can look at the enforcement and, and, you know, in cars, if they go down to a certain spot that's showing red and there's a car in it, then that person either hasn't paid or they've overstayed their welcome, and they're able to do the enforcement that way. So we are actively enforcing down there. So that's kiosks. If we were ever to do something in the downtown, again, where we locate them around our snow activity and our removal activity would be one thing to consider. We probably would need to go to a pay and display where somebody printed out a receipt and goes back to their car and puts it on the dashboard because in the winter months, you know, signage would be covered or space numbers would be covered. So if you were to do something downtown, it probably is gonna be a little bit more densely located. I think, Wes, you gave me the number, and I forget, and it was about $7,500 to $8,000 per kiosk?
Correct.
So call it $8,000, those numbers were a couple of years old. So ballpark, $8,000 a kiosk.
And how many spaces under traditional spacing would they cover?
I think if you basically go six or seven spaces either way before you're walking back to your car. So one kiosk, you know, strategically located would cover that amount. Anything further, you know, in the elements, rain and snow and snowbanks and all that, make it a little bit more challenging. So we've, like, and for the reasons I've stated, we've been able to get away with fewer at the Weers because people aren't walking back, and they're typically there in the nice weather, and we have controlled cuts to get onto the boardwalk. So those are the updates I have for you tonight.
A lot of subjects covered there. Questions, comments for the manager?
Just a comment. I went to a place in New York in June, and they've been redoing their city streets for the last three, four, five years, and actually been doing a really nice job. They're kinda similar to us, lakefront property and boats similar to the Mount Washington things. And they've been putting in kiosks all over the place. And one place that was kind of interesting to see is they have kiosks on the boat docks now over there. So not only do the cars pay to be in the area, but the boats do also. So they got one prominently displayed on the boat docks.
If he's found dead, you'll know why.
So it's like pay to play, you know?
I will defer to the council to give me that guidance on that.
I was just kinda surprised, you know, that they, they've gone to that now, too.
We give Counselor Hamel a badge and a job. Counselor.
I have a couple of things. We had talked at a previous meeting about the type of ambulance, and Henry, Counselor Lippman suggested that the reason for the particular type of ambulance we're running is it was more cost-effective. I believe we were gonna look into that. I hope we could get a report on the cost-effectiveness versus the smaller gas-driven that almost everybody else runs.
Yes.
When we went through the Comcast or whoever it was, contract, they provided us with funds for emergency notification purposes, and I haven't heard whether we finally found a vendor to provide us with. And if I just missed that report, I apologize. But if not, if you could let us know where we stand on that.
We received that $10,000 check. We also received the technology grant that was part of the Comcast. Even though they aren't up and running yet, so both those checks are received. We haven't gone out and done anything with that new notification system because right now, everybody who wants cable is on MetroCast, and we have the capabilities. So rather than spend it on a notification system when Comcast isn't up and running right now, we thought it more prudent to wait until they started actually hooking up properties and then use the money at that time.
I was hoping that, that the notification system would work beyond the cable systems.
It will. It'll, it'll be an opt-in. So yes, we, we could start anytime, but we do have the funds, and we can get that on the front burner.
Brick work on the old La Conia or Lakeport Fire Station, have we heard when that's gonna be finished up?
No, we haven't, but it's duly noted.
I think it's faux brickwork, if I understood.
It's a faux brickwork on the faux hose tower.
I saw some paperwork on, on the issues with the dive on the lake, and we were meeting with Marine Patrol and, and our police department. I wondered if there was any progress reported on our dealings with the dive.
Yes, so the dive is a, is a kind of a two-story floating boat that goes out during the daytime, and people at Sandbars can, or boaters can swim up to it and have lunch and a beverage, and there's a slide off it, and it's kind of a floating restaurant that goes to where boaters tie up and is a place to have fun. At, I think this is their second year on the lake. This is their first year in the evenings now that they are tied up at the pier. And where they are, and even though they're not a bar nightclub, no live music, none of that type of stuff, where they're tied up on the left of the pier, as you're looking at it from Lakeside, is fairly close to Simpson Avenue, and some of those noises that are coming off this new establishment are having an impact on some of the neighbors over there. And again, we don't think it's overly boisterous, people on the boat, it's not really that kind of setting. But when you have 30, 40, 50 people who are now sitting up 15, 20 feet off the water, and we know how sound carries across the water, there's some challenges. So the folks who own the business, we've been working with since day one with Liquor Commission, more recently with Marine Patrol about jurisdiction of who controls what over the lake, and we've done some clarification there. Chief Canfield was involved, our planning director is involved, our legal counsel was involved. We are actively enforcing noise complaints. Police officers are out of their, out of their vehicles and, and walking and taking note of not just the dive, but all of our nightclub... dive, but all of our nightclub establishments down there in addition to it. More recently, through planning and land use staff, we did mail a letter to the property owner, which is an LLC, but it's based with the folks who own East Coast Flightcraft, who have been very good corporate citizens and have done a lot of improvements for that property, and let them know that we are considering this as a change of use on what's happening down at the pier. So it's a new establishment going into it, and we have basically said to them that we need them to come in and, you know, submit an application and present and be able to go before the planning board about this change of use, and the planning board could make decisions as to hours of operation, other restrictions going into it. Ryan Cardella, who also serves on our Weir's Tiff Advisory Board, is a business owner down there. Very responsive he's in, he wants to make it work. They're possibly talking about moving it to the other side of the pier where it won't be in anyone's way, but now there'd be a natural structure buffer there that could soften the noise. So he definitely wants to do the right thing. He is communicating. And again, I want to go back and say the folks at the dive, all the way along, had communicated as we worked through city issues with means of egress and access to the boat from life safety, through Liquor Commission, through others, and it just through, I think, no one's true fault, it's just a little louder at certain times of night than folks who are there, and we always know that some people, we hear, sell entertainment, and other people sell sleep. We can hear from some of our property owners there. So this is one of those competing interests in a commercial resort zone in the summer when windows are open and people are on vacation. So we are actively on top of it, and that's the latest step that we've asked them to come and be a part of the planning board process.
One last thing. Getting back to the Court Street property, and it relates to some others that I've mentioned to the planning department. It's my understanding we're in the process of hiring a full-time code enforcement officer, and I'm hoping that some of the code enforcement issues, like the property on the corner of 106 and Roller Coaster Road, which I still get calls about fairly frequently, and that reflects on the Court Street property. I've had, not a lot, but one or two people mention that it looks like Lurch's home, and it's not very presentable as you're coming into the city. Beyond that, I question how safe it might be. So I was hoping we could try to get a more definitive description from the staffers on a timeframe, at least ask. And also, I guess I would hope that the new code enforcement officer, I know he has to deal with council and the courts, but I would hope that we can get some more aggressive or perhaps more timely response to complaints about code issues.
Understood, and that's a conversation that we have. I do know the property on Roller Coaster, it was just either coming up in a couple of days or at the end of this month?
End of August.
End of August is the court date on that. It was scheduled earlier, it was delayed once. We did get court enforcement on a property on Winter Street, then now there's a window for the property owner to come into compliance, otherwise there would be fines, and we're also looking to seek our legal costs being reimbursed on those properties. So both of those were scheduled far earlier this summer season, and through reasons of people requesting delays, not on the city end, those court hearings have been delayed.
Thank you.
Counselor Hamel?
I got a couple more things, Scott, but relating with the buildings, we have made some progress, I think. The one on Winter Street has cleaned up quite a bit, and then the old garages on Bay Street that have been there forever and are falling down, they're gone. So that was a good thing there, although there's a business there that needs to be addressed. But we're making some progress, but it's very slow. But also, you're talking about the Weir's. Has there been any progress on repairing the sidewalks with the show brick there that we put in along the concrete and then the other sidewalks that are cracking and?
Yeah, the cracking is going to be the nature of the beast, and we'll address that. They're not to a point where that's a hazard, but the bricks, I know we discussed about getting that done sooner. I don't have a good answer for you tonight, but let me get it to you tomorrow.
Okay, because some of those were way down, and I didn't know if that was a liability of someone twisting an ankle in there, a little kid or whatever.
I discussed it with staff a while ago, and that was going to be something that was addressed. I just don't have the answer for you off the top of my head tonight.
Okay, great. Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Questions or comments for the manager? Okay, thank you. We're on to new business. First item of new business, Counselors, on page thirty-one of your packet, is a request from Sarah Jenner for fundraising on city property. I think you all also received an email today that noted that Ms. Jenner would not be able to be here tonight to explain her proposal, but gave a further explanation of what it was about, and this is a basketball tournament to raise money for, in memory of Lance Reason, hosted by some friends of his, including Ms. Jenner. And so she is asking for approval to use the Wyatt Park Basketball Courts on August tenth with the expectation, and that's the reason why it's before us, that they would raise more than two thousand dollars on city property as a result of this. And that's right, Wyatt Park is what they're asking for, not Levitt Park. Is that correct? Wyatt Park?
Wyatt Park.
Okay. So the Parks and Rec Commission has approved this request and has sent it to us because of the two thousand dollar requirement. So a motion be in order at this point in time to honor the request made by Sarah Jenner for the use of the Wyatt Park Basketball Court for the Lance Reason Basketball Tournament on August tenth, two thousand nineteen, with a rain date of August seventeenth, from ten a.m. to three p.m.
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Haynes makes that motion. Counselor Valen seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative. That motion carries. Thank you. Next up is a matter of somewhat routine business for the council, and that is with regard to the city manager's contract. Section two of the city manager's employment agreement provides that it be extended at the end of each contract year so that there's always a full-year's contract in place in the event the manager or council decide not to renew that contract. At this time, the council will consider extending the city manager's employment agreement, which starts on page thirty-three of your packet tonight, to extend until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one. Any discussion before we get to motions here? Comments, questions?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Hamel? Counselor Hamel makes a motion. Counselor Hamel moves to extend the contract to city manager Scott Myers as outlined in section two of his employment agreement until June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. Counselor Cheney seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative. That motion carries. And if I had a seventh vote, I would cast that as well, so.
Thank you very much for your continued confidence. We're starting year nine.
Year nine. That's hard to believe.
Oh, yeah.
No, it's not.
You didn't think I'd bake it that long?
No. Nine years has gone by fast, is what I'm saying.
Starting year nine.
Yeah, I've only been here for three, and that feels like nine.
Okay, unfinished business. First up is second reading and approval of Resolution nineteen relative to the financing of the repair and reconstruction of the historic Colonial Theater. We have three motions before us to consider tonight. The actual resolution is on page thirty-five. Before we get to motions, is there any comment or questions at this point? I would report to the council on this matter that I've been in pretty constant contact over the past few days with Justin Slattery of Bill Knapp Economic Development Council, and he has been working diligently for the past days with our three primary contractors on this job, and that's Bonnet Page and Stone Construction, and Masachik Interpenetrant Architects, and Ristfrosh Shumway Engineers. And as I think we have been very honest with everyone to date in terms of obstacles to getting this project done after all these years, that there were two significant obstacles in front of us. One was, hopefully, we're going to take care of tonight, and that is the city's commitment to this financing package. And the second one was, because the bids that we originally got on this project are two and a half years old at this point in time, we had informed the council that we were going to have to rebid the project, and obviously, any time you do that, there's some uncertainty as to where those costs are going to come in. And I think I had advised the council at one of our most recent meetings that the intent is to rebid officially the projects on September one at Bonnet Page and Stone. But to take the uncertainty out of that measure and to get us a higher level of certainty at this point in time, Bonnet Page and Stone has gone back to the primary, not all, but the primary contractors who were awarded the bids or would have been awarded the bids the first time, meaning HVAC, plumbing, electrical, that sort of thing, and gone back over the numbers with those contractors, and so that we didn't have to wait until September one, actually, to find out where their numbers were going to come in for the major costs of the project. Some of the smaller items will still be rebid. But the good news is that Bonnet Page and Stone is reporting that, based on what they're getting, the feedback that they're getting from the primary contractors on the project, we're right on target from a budget standpoint. So that is exceptionally good news at this point in time, and we still have, and those numbers do not include the five hundred thousand dollars that we still have built into the project for contingency costs there for any change orders or whatever that would be necessary after the contract is awarded. So nothing but good news all around on that front at this point in time. So I think that we may not be at a hundred percent yet, but we're getting pretty darn close to it, and hopefully, we'll take a giant step in that direction tonight. So having said that, anyone else? Questions or anything? The first motion that would be in order would be to move a waiving of Resolution nineteen tonight and to read Resolution nineteen by title only. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion. Counselor Cheney seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative. That motion carries. Next up would be a motion would be in order to approve a second reading of Resolution nineteen, a resolution relative to authorizing the city manager to take any actions necessary to issue bonds for the repair and restoration of the historic Colonial Theater in the amount of six million, seven hundred thousand dollars. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion. Counselor Hamel seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving a resolution on second reading, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative. That motion carries. Thank you. And finally, Counselor Hamel, will you move to approve Resolution nineteen, a resolution relative to authorizing the city manager to take any actions necessary to issue bonds for the repair and restoration of the historic Colonial Theater in the amount of six point seven million dollars?
I will.
Would you like to second that, Counselor Valens?
I would.
Happily, he will.
Happily is right.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative. That motion carries unanimously, and I congratulate all of us. I'll maybe editorialize for a minute on, as was stated earlier tonight by somebody, that having confidence in our city and its future to get this done. So thank you, one and all, for your support of this project.
Particular recognition should go to both you and to Counselor Hamel for the work you've done in the committee over the past, I don't know how many months, but thank you for your time and effort, and it's both of you, and you ought to recognize good work, and I'm recognizing the good work that you did. Thank you. City manager, you're included, too.
Thank you. All right, we're on to item B, which is, okay, items B and C. I think you all got a memorandum from the city manager on this. These are two items that we passed at a previous meeting, having to do with borrowings, and they're back on the agenda because there was an error made in the public notice for the public hearings that we had on these two measures, so we have to do it again. That's a simple explanation.
Simple explanation, but we've confirmed with the bank that the great rates hold, and we're not in danger there, and we're going to close on these very soon.
So it's going to take us two more meetings, or?
Tonight and August twelfth.
Tonight and August twelfth. So we'll do the first reading tonight and schedule a public hearing, and then the next meeting, we'll do it all over again. Okay, so this is something we've already approved, we're just going back over it again. All right, so the first item, B, Resolution sixteen, is on, the narrative is on thirty-six, the resolution itself is on page thirty-seven. Any questions before we get to motions?
Can I offer one more comment, Mr. Mayor? And Counselor Lippman asked me if we need another finance committee meeting. All we're really doing in the process, and we've reviewed this with bond counsel and our legal counsel, is ratifying the prior vote. So we're going through this process, but it's mainly going to be to ratify so we don't need another finance committee meeting to look at the terms again.
You've already decided those terms.
Yes.
All right, so first motion would be to waive the reading of Resolution sixteen in its entirety and to read tonight by title only. Counselor Haynes makes that motion, seconded by Counselor Cheney. Any discussion? All those in favor of waiving reading, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative. That motion carries. So don't we need procedural questioning here? Don't we need a motion to pass this on first reading? Or do we already do?
We've already done that, so this is just a move to schedule a public hearing.
So the first reading counted. It's the second reading in the, okay. Everybody got that?
Mm-hmm.
So our first reading, so we're just repeating the second reading in the public hearing. All right. All right, so second motion would be to schedule a public hearing of Resolution sixteen during the regular council meeting on August twelfth, two thousand nineteen, and to gather public input prior to adoption. Someone care to make that motion? Counselor Hosmer, seconded by Counselor Hamel. Any discussion? All those in favor of scheduling that hearing, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative. That motion carries unanimously. All right, then we're on to Resolution seventeen. Same thing, a motion be in order to waive a reading of this resolution in its entirety and to read tonight by title only. Someone speak up. Counselor Haynes makes a motion, seconded by Counselor Hamel. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative. That motion carries. And then we need a motion to schedule a public hearing, resolution relative to Resolution seventeen during the regular city council meeting on August twelfth, two thousand nineteen, to gather public input prior to adoption. Counselor Lippman makes that motion. Counselor Valen seconds it. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of scheduling that public hearing, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative. That motion carries. Thank you. Okay, then the last item of unfinished business is what we had the public hearing on earlier tonight about putting forward to the public the charter amendment having to do with the acceptance of unanticipated funds. During the May thirteenth, this is largely for the benefit of our audience, during the May thirteen, two thousand nineteen, regular city council meeting, the council voted to adopt RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five slash B, chapter five, colon zero six of the city charter to presently, it's presently inconsistent with the statutory requirements of RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B. It is therefore proposed that an additional paragraph be added under chapter five, colon zero six. And the new language, do I need to read the old language, or can I just read the new language?
I don't think you need to read any of it.
Oh, really? All right.
I second that.
Let me just read the first sentence, so our audience will know we're talking about. "Notwithstanding provisions of section five, colon zero six, the council is authorized to apply for, accept, and expend unanticipated money from a state, federal, or other governmental unit or a private source when it becomes available during the fiscal year, and the limit on that authorization is ten thousand dollars or less."
Technically, it's less than ten thousand.
Less than ten thousand, nine thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars or less. Okay? All right. So the motion that would be in order would be to authorize the city clerk to add the proposed charter amendment question to the November five, two thousand nineteen municipal election ballot per RSA forty-nine B, colon five, one, regarding the acceptance and expenditure of unanticipated funds made available during the fiscal year per RSA thirty-one, colon ninety-five B. Who would like to make that motion? Counselor Hosmer, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor of putting this on the ballot, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative. That motion carries.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, just on a parallel path, once we approved this on first reading, copies of this language were sent to Secretary of State's office, the Attorney General's office, and Department of Revenue Administration, I believe, all certified mail with the letter. We've got receipts back. We've got receipts back, they've received that. They have thirty days to respond if they have any concerns with this language being in conflict with state law. And no answer, if there is none from any of the three, is assumed that it's, they have no issue with it. So that, that clock has already started.
Okay, council comments. Any comments tonight?
I didn't want to disappoint you.
You may lead off, Counsel.
I had a meeting last week with residents up at Merrith Bay, which is just before you get the fun spot on the right, that colony that's.
Formerly Aquasale years ago.
Folks expressed some concerns about particularly motorcycle noise and other traffic issues. A large number of their units are actually on Scenic Drive or Road, whatever it is, on the backside. And I think that's where most of the concerns and complaints have come from. They've started a petition, although I don't have a signed or a list of people who signed it, they had started a petition. I'm sure they'd be more than happy to provide it to us. I would ask that the appropriate committee be asked to look at this and see if we can accommodate some of these people's concerns with regards to traffic and noise and the increases that are attendant on the Weers in the summertime. But, but I've also had others who complained about signs missing, speed limit signs missing on Scenic Drive and Watson Road. So if we could have the appropriate committee look at this petition and, and have a committee meeting and invite these folks to attend if they'd like, and I think they would, to see what we can do.
I'm looking at our list of committees here, and we have a public safety committee that currently has no items on its agenda.
What better committee?
And that committee is chaired by, guess who? Counsel Bowden. Also includes Counselors Hosmer and Lippman.
Get all these chairs, damn it.
Yeah, Dave's got like three.
Does that seem like an appropriate topic for that committee?
Well, you know, I, I don't know if it's public safety or government operations and ordinances, and I don't think we have to figure that out now. I think we can figure it out when we actually get the petition and see what it says, what they're looking for. If it's noise, that's operations and ordinances. If it's public safety, you may be right. So I don't think we need to figure out.
So you want to wait for the?
Wait for the report, then we'll figure out what committee it belongs to.
They've already provided a copy of it, which I've also provided to the manager, who could produce it for you.
Okay, well.
I don't think we need a bunch of names to say we ought to look at, into these concerns.
I'm not saying we should. I didn't know we had, we actually had a petition.
We do. Counsel, since you chair both committees, I will leave it up to you as to which committee you would like it assigned to.
Okay. I'm going to look at the petition first. Is it fast enough for you that I, that we schedule a meeting in the next council meeting? Is that okay with you?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. You giving this to me?
I am.
All right, so he'll make a motion at the next meeting.
I'll make a motion at the next meeting to schedule to some, to some committee. You're on both of them, by the way.
Okay, anything else, Counsel? Someone else have counsel comments?
I do.
We'll go on, we'll go in Merrith or Counsel Bowden.
I just, I've been reading some of the comments about when we, when we're required to register to vote, and I read your comments, I read.
Register to run for office, you mean?
Yeah, running for office. And I just want to make you, I'm not, I'm not buying into one side of the issue or another, but there was one other contested primary that was actually involved War Two when I was running, and we did hand count the ballots for that, for that primary. That wasn't, didn't take a whole lot of time and wasn't particularly burdensome.
Probably about twelve votes.
No, actually, there were, there was about two hundred votes. There, it was like, it was a three-way race. Unfortunately for all you, I won.
We'll blame that oversight on the memory of the city manager.
He's trying to forget me, I know he is.
If I can add to it, there was a primary in Ward Four also.
Really?
Yeah.
It was primary in four.
Just on that note, maybe you didn't get out on the full trail, the clerk had reached out to the folks who print our ballots and within that window of opportunity, we can get printed ballots done by the time the following period closes for the primary and we don't have to rely on hand counting if that was truly a concern. We can make that happen.
I just got that answer today.
Okay, so we can do, we can do printed ballots? Hand counting was not that onerous, as I recall, so I got, I got no dog in, I got no dog in that fight.
Counsel Bowden, when they had to count them ten times in Ward Four, because there was a tie.
Ten times?
Ten times.
You still would have had to do a recount if you did, if you did, if it was, came out a tie with the ballot count. You still would have had to do that recount. You would have had to hand do it too, so.
Counsel Hamel.
Just a quick comment, and it involves Scenic Road and Motorcycle Week. I would hope that next year that we can make signs there that kind of describe what's coming up ahead on that road, a little better, bigger, whatever it takes.
I think we can incorporate that into the petition that was received and handle that all at one committee.
Yeah.
Okay, any other counsel comments tonight? Anybody? Okay, no other business. Well, I'm sorry, we have a non-public session tonight. That's right.
Finance committee meeting after that.
Sorry?
And a finance committee meeting.
And a finance committee meeting after the, that's to take up the $6.7 million borrowing, right, for the Colonial Theater. All right, so we have a need for non-public session, as I said at the top of the meeting tonight. And so a motion, and I was, I'm not even going to have to say anything, everybody's leaving.
Is that me?
It's not karaoke night here, I don't think.
No, this is haunted.
All right.
That's non-public, are we?
So a motion would be in order to, for the council to enter non-public session under RSA ninety-one A, colon three, paragraph two, paragraph D, for the consideration of the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, which if discussed in public would likely benefit a party or parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general community. Someone make that motion, please. Thank you, Counsel Cheney, seconded by Counsel Hosmer. And we need a record vote on this, so I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counsel Cheney.
Yes.
Counsel Bowden.
Yes.
Counsel Lippman.
Yes.
Counsel Haines.
Yes.
Counsel Hamel.
Yes.
Counsel Hosmer.
Yes.
Mary Engler.
Yes. All right, thank you. So we are in non-public session. And the subject matter is.